Thank you, Brian and Travis. The light's on.
Does that mean on or almost on?
No, that means we're going, I think. It was red, but now it's, yeah, very Christmasy back there, which-
Patriotic. Red, white, and blue.
Election day.
Oh, election night.
Thank you.
Is it election night?
You can't see it on, you can't see it on television, but the, the on-air lights are very patriotic tonight. So, thank you, SFCN, Travis and Brian, everybody taking care of us to make sure this meeting gets out to the public. So, welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming to City Council in Spanish Fork, November 21st, 2023. We appreciate all of you being here in person and everybody watching online or on TV at home. Kevin can attest to this. Every time you go to the Senior Citizens Committee, they say, "I'm watching you," right?
They watch it. They're faithful viewers, yes.
Hello, senior citizens. Thanks for, thanks for watching us. Okay, we'll get started, just like we always do in Spanish Fork City Council, with a prayer or motivational message. And then Councilwoman Beck will give us the pledge afterwards. Councilman Marshall has our motivational message and prayer.
I have asked Roxanne White to do that for me, and she reluctantly has agreed. Come on up.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this privilege of being able to gather, and we ask for thy Spirit to attend us, that we'll be responsible and civil, and that we'll open our hearts to understanding. We're grateful for all of the work of the city employees and the city leaders, and for the citizens that have been engaged, and please help us all to work together to come to good solutions for this great community. We thank thee for the great blessings that was bestowed upon our community, and pray for thy continued help, and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much.
Will everyone stand and repeat the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move right along to Item C in our agenda tonight. The recognition of the Spanish Fork University 101 graduates. We can see a few of you here tonight, and thank you for coming. I think Mr. Nick Porter is going to take that for us. How many graduates of this program do we have on the council here? Councilman Carden? Two of us? Did you do it?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Last week, we graduated our fifth class of Spanish Fork University, a class of 16, many of whom are here tonight, so we just want to recognize them publicly. This class is a 10-week program where they get to interact with all of the departments in the city and kind of peek behind the curtain. They got to visit the sewer treatment plant, which was many of their favorites. No? It was particularly ripe that night. But, but they had a good time. So, I just want to invite them up. Come on up, grads. We'll present them with their class photo, which we took last week, and get a picture in council meeting. And I think the mayor wanted a couple of you to say something, particularly if you were a Mapleton resident.
I said something already. I guess it's the other Mapleton resident.
Yep, yep. Yeah, we figured representatives of the state know how to speak on the fly, so we'd pick on you, Representative White. How you doing?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and for everybody who is here. It has been an absolute privilege and a delight to be able to be a part of this Spanish Fork University, and to be able to stand here with so many new friends and classmates of this. We particularly, Roxanne and I, appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the Spanish Fork University, even though we live in Mapleton, because this has provided an opportunity to get some insights and background of how the city operates, and the incredible team, the employees, and the department heads, and every employee from every area, that we were able to get a kind of a behind-the-curtains look of how a city operates, to see the great things that are happening, to be able to see what challenges a city's face, as well as opportunities to be able to move forward. And so, it's just been a privilege for me to be able to be with this wonderful group of classmates. We were thinking that maybe we should get a class reunion and meet at Glades for some, you know, ice cream cones or some milkshakes occasionally, to be able to stay in touch. This opportunity has also been very helpful for me, as I have an opportunity to represent about half of Spanish Fork up at the state legislature, to be able to see how state policies and budgets affect a city, and how potential policies might impact a city as well, and also to be able to understand what the needs are of Spanish Fork, so I can go up and advocate and represent the great city of Spanish Fork and our great communities and residents up on Capitol Hill during the legislative session. So, thank you for this tremendous opportunity. It was so well-organized. Every evening of the class, those particular departments and areas conveyed what they do and how they do it. There was also a sense of camaraderie amongst all of the employees that we saw, of everybody working together to help the residents have a great community to live in and to play and to learn and recreate and be able to raise families and to be able to have a prosperous life. So, thank you very much for creating this type of opportunity. I've shared this experience with other city leaders throughout the state. I think every city should model what Spanish Fork is doing and create a similar university class to be able to help residents, as well as legislators, be able to understand how a city operates and what we can do collectively to help everyone to succeed. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
During our graduation last week, they also were presented with a diploma. Tanner wasn't there, so here is his. And the mayor wants you to put that on your wall and replace any other degrees you have. Any questions for, for the class? Anybody else you want to, you know, throw publicly into the microphone? Questions?
It was fun visiting with them last week at the banquet, and just thank you for all your time that you put in.
Okay. Well, let's grab a picture with these guys. So, come on up front. This one you'll have to print up on your own. All right. One, two, three. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Angie Clayson, I figure that you can go home and teach Mike a thing or two about the city. He's a, he's a former graduate of the 101, right? So, there's gonna be some interesting discussions at home. Yeah, that's good. Good. Well, thank you, guys, and thank you, thank you, Nick, for another successful class of 101. You've got another one coming up, but you're gonna hold on to when that can be, sign-ups happen?
Yeah, we'll have that in the spring, so sign-ups will be February, March timeframe.
Okay, perfect. Thanks again. Appreciate all of you. Let's go to Item D, the recognition of our CERT class graduates. Yes, I saw, I think you, Trevor, are you coming up, or is somebody else talking for Trevor? All right. Okay.
Good evening. Thanks for having us again. We had another successful CERT program, the Community Emergency Response Team. We have this class twice a year, and it's, it's only gaining momentum here in Spanish Fork. And I'm really grateful to these wonderful residents who took the time to, to be trained for a month-long program. And then we just finished, at the beginning of this month, we had our mock disaster. So, Nick, if you'd go to the next slide, I threw up a few pictures from this class. There's a, there's a clicker right by your head. We get to play with toys. As you can see, we kind of, we put together a scenario of a disaster and from the aerial view of a city, and we utilize professional first responders, city departments, and then also CERT volunteers. And we have trucks and individuals and scenarios placed around the carpet here to, to pretend like there's a real scenario going on and how they would respond as volunteers helping in a disaster situation. And they worked through it. This was the very first night, and it was amazing how they put together just the few principles that we talked about that night in response to a disaster. Next was one of our favorite evenings is putting out fires. There's Misty, putting out the fire very effectively, and we enjoyed our, our working with the fire department that evening. We also go over our medical response, so we talk about controlling bleeding. We do full-body assessments, understanding life-threatening situations, and how they can help make a difference. And then we do what's called cribbing, that you see on the right-hand side, where we utilize leverage to lift heavy objects off of somebody if they're stuck. These are some pictures of our mock disaster we held in Springville. We utilized Merit Academy, and we partnered with the Springville and the Linden CERT program as well. They finished their class at the same time as we did. So, total, we had between 15 and 20 CERT responders, and we, we put together a real scenario. We had actors, victims, high school kids. They got all makeuped up, got the makeup to look like injuries, and they were able to assess the scene, find victims, and get them out of there. They set up a triage area outside based on their critical, their critical needs, red being the worst, the immediate needs. And then again, searching the building for, for victims. And then after every mock, we have a hot wash. We talk about what went well, what lessons were learned, and what we can do next, better next time. And it was a wonderful experience to work with not only our residents here in Spanish Fork, but also leaders and other responders throughout the county. So, again, that's our class there. Just missing Jim, had to sneak out. But really grateful for this opportunity to help teach this program and to interact with the residents twice a year in this program. I think I mentioned before, but we have about 500 people in the, in the city that are CERT-trained, so they will be a great resource for us in the time of need. So, I'd like to invite anyone, if they'd like to share something they learned or appreciated about the program, or, or things that we can do better next time.
Kept looking at me. I think that's my turn. What I really enjoyed is that we have a lot of experience among this group. We've got like a chemistry professor, somebody who helped with Florida disaster cleanup, guys that are really good with ham, radio, things like that. And I feel like if there's a disaster, it'd be kind of chaos to organize all that, so being able to do this program ahead of time, so that should something happen, we've got all those different talents put together in some organized fashion, and we can help out quickly and effectively. So, that's why I appreciate it. I just moved here in May, so I'm enjoying Spanish Fork from Michigan, so.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Welcome. Thank you.
Misty Zogg, Z-A-U-G-G.
Trevor, I have a question for any one of you. Feel free to jump up if you want to answer it, but on that mock disaster, that moment when they say, "All right, go," you know, "ready, begin," and you hear screaming coming from inside the building, I'm sure, right? And you, you don't really know exactly what you're gonna be walking into. What were some of the emotions that you had as you were walking into that mock disaster? Yeah, please. Because this is a, this is a very real experience, where the makeup and the screaming is, it adds to the level of, of emotions, right?
It does. Kent Gibson. Seems like I know what I'm doing here, so. So, in the first part, it started out kind of slow, like, okay, yeah, great, we're gonna assess the situation. So, we're looking at the building, like, what, can we even go into it? And we figured we can, okay, it's safe to go in. We can hear the screams. And we come up with a game plan, who's doing what, going to, as far as breaking up into teams, and certain teams go in certain directions, other directions, the team I was with. I was helping with material and support and bringing what items that are needed for those that are searching. And they needed, they said there was a fire on the radio. I'm like, okay, they need a fire extinguisher, and where were you? And they said it was down this hallway. So, we, me and my buddy would go down the hallway to provide a fire extinguisher. We go down there, and there was no one there from the CERT team. I go, "Where'd everybody go?" But there was victims there and a fire. It's like, okay, we gotta act. So, we acted and put out the fire, and then started looking at the victims. And what hit me, though, was the CERT is do the most good for the most amount of people. And what hit me was, we had one victim there that we couldn't help. Like, they were alive, but may not make it, so we had to make a decision. Like, we had to leave someone behind at that point. We weren't ready to take everybody. You want to help everybody when you can. You're there, but you can't. So, that's, when you say life situations, that was, you know, jumping into the deep end right there. It's like, okay, is he gonna die? Maybe, maybe not, but we have to get those we can help out to help more people out. And then, before we can get to that one, help as many people out. And then, if there's time, then go back to the one that was most critical, that we couldn't move at the time. So, yes, it was scary.
Thank you, Kent.
Trevor, I've got a question for you. You mentioned, how many individuals in the city that have gone through the CERT program?
We're nearing 600.
That's, that's incredible. That's awesome. So, for those individuals that have done the program, are certified, what opportunities are there for them to continue to freshen or refresh their skills and practice and continue to be a part of the CERT?
Yeah, so I try and hold at least quarterly trainings, whether they be freshening up on skills and knowledge or new skills to share. CPR is not part of the CERT program, but I think it is critical knowledge to have. And so, I often hold CPR trainings for CERT members to come and get further training. We've had real-life experiences where they're called out to help, to assist with the debris removal of that house fire. We helped in 2020 with the Range Fire in Provo. We helped with during COVID, during the vaccination, vaccination sites, and a number of different things. So, I'm constantly trying to keep the team engaged, so they're, they're remembered, and they're, they're thought of, and so that they know how valuable they are. Thank you.
When's your next meet?
Our next class? April. Yep. So, anyone else have anything to say? So, I'll present them with their certificate. Misty Zogg, Kent Gibson, Jim Jett, Leann Jett, Cody Peterson, Brent Har, and Joe Olson. Thanks again for a great class.
I'd like to comment how important I think this really is. The city supports this, and Trevor did a really great job helping us. My wife and I both had our CERT experience, initial training in Cobb County, Georgia, about 15 years ago. And the training has really changed, and the procedures have changed, and what you do and what you don't do has changed. So, if you've had this training in the past, you're not done. There's, there's more to learn. And the new training has things you can do online and home, which you should do first, which I didn't realize how important it was to do first. I could have done better if I had known that. So, that's something to share ahead of time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
I think we should co-brand this class as Spanish Fork University 901. Let's come this way. Trevor, why don't you flip to the other side? All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Trevor.
Good work. Thank you, Trevor. Thank you, participants. That's, that's great, great stuff. That's important to our city. We appreciate your time there. Okay, now we'll go to public comments. This is the part of the meeting where anybody from the public could come up and address the mayor and council on any topic that you'd like. Please feel free to, to come up and address the mayor and council. Yes, you brought a guest with you, too. Yes. Oh, awesome. Good. Tell Tara your name there. Thank you, Sarah.
And I want to talk about the rec center. This is, don't worry, this is not what you think it's gonna be, which I'm sure that you've heard a lot. I have a proposal that I think would address some of the ill will that many people within their community are suffering from. First off, it's obvious that the Spanish Fork Rec Center was modeled after Provo, at least it was to me. As somebody who used to live in Provo, who used Provo Rec Center, which is great, because I think we can all agree that this Springville one is not. So, it's much better than Springville, and I'm excited for that. But one thing that was noticeably absent to me, as somebody who used to use the Provo Rec Center, was the indoor playplace. Provo has an indoor playplace that is outside of the paid entrance, and a lot of people will come there in the winter to use it, or in the very hot summer. One of the things I'd like to mention, the difference between a library and a rec center, is that a library is paid for by the community and begins to be used by everyone in the community. A rec center is paid for by the community and then only used by people who can pay more. The normal people of the community who live here, who have already paid in their taxes, don't get to use the rec center if you can't afford it. And there are a lot of us, a lot of people, who can't afford the extra expense of the rec center membership. And that's one of the reasons why it's so hurtful to have that be pushed through. I propose that as part of the recs department, which, you know, part of the aim is to provide recreational opportunities for everybody, like parks, like the library, is to bring back the Provo design of the, of the indoor playplace outside of the paid entrance. It would be a very valuable resource in a place that's very hot and also gets very bad conversion. Another suggestion that I thought of, but I'm not sure how feasible it would be architecturally, is to have the walking track also be outside of the paid entrance. So, for example, you could have a separate set of stairs for the walking track and have it be, have it be contained. So, usually the walking track goes around the outside, and then sometimes there'll be exits and things. You could possibly have one exit with, you know, you scan your card so that you can go into the gym from the track. But having a track, an indoor track, I think would also be a valuable addition for the community, that the community can use. Another thing that I saw Provo do a couple of times that they didn't continue was to have a couple of free days for the residents. And so, you know, a day at the beginning of the season, a day at the end of the season for, you know, show your, show your license, show that you live here, and then you can come and use the rec center that you helped pay for, even if you can't afford a membership.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks for coming. Anyone else that would like to address the council, besides Brian?
Sarah, come up. You're gonna have to start over.
Edith Hill. Everybody knows me by now. I'll speak really loud. I apologize for your in-lane, because I got detained at work, so I couldn't make it for the 101 class, but I really wanted to stand up and really thank the city council, the mayor, and all its employees for the opportunity to actually be part of Spanish Fork 101. It was an amazing class. I think one of my favorite opportunities, when I got to, we were doing a council, and I got to be the city manager, Seth Perrins. So, it was awesome. And the mayor asked me, "Hey, does any, you have any information as the, as Seth?" And I said, "Sure, the city manager. Of course I do. I'm Seth Perrins." And I got to thinking about that, as I was teasing him, and that's why I got up, had to get up now, was like, I, what was the thought process?
Still not working.
Still not working. Thought processes. Never give up an opportunity to say something good. Seth does that all the time, so that's typically what Seth talks about. He says, "Hey, I have something good to share." So, it was an opportunity for that. So, grateful for that. Thank you very much for having that. I'm super excited to see what's gonna happen in the future for Spanish Fork 101, because I heard we had a lot of opportunities for things that nobody else saw. So, I can imagine what's gonna come up next from the different departments. And I'm looking at you all now, because you guys have to go bigger and better now, anyway. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate all that you do as well. Thank you.
Clarified. Eddis is detained at work, but that wasn't like detained at the county jail or anything, right? That was your gainful employment. Okay, not this time. Thank you, Eddis. Anyone else from the public that would like to address the mayor and council?
Okay, seeing none, we'll go to council comments. We'll start over here this time, starting with Councilwoman Beck, and then go that way.
Mayor, before, before we jump to that, while Sarah's still here, we'll take, we, we've looked at a lot of what you had mentioned, but we'll, if you would give your contact information to that gentleman that's on the corner there, Dale, he'll reach out to you and talk through some of those ideas and thoughts that you had, and, and we can get you some of that information. Thank you for your, your comment.
Thank you, Seth. Go.
Mayor, while, while Sarah's still here, one, one of the things that we've talked about going through this process is how to make it affordable for everyone in our community. I know the mayor and I have talked extensively about, is there a way to, you know, solicit scholarships, donations, whatever, so that anyone in our community can use it? So, in lieu of finding donations for the construction, or the capital improvement, we'll be looking for those donations to make, make it accessible for everyone in Spanish Fork. That's our goal. I can't guarantee that's going to happen, but that certainly is our goal, is for, if you live in Spanish Fork, you can use it, whether you can afford it or not.
I appreciate that, that point, and I meant to, to bring that up as well. The, the things that people do report that they like about the physical attributes of, of the Provo Recreation Center, there's also those programming attributes that you, you mentioned, that we've been in-
that we've been in constant contact with them of maybe what they wish that had done better from the beginning and basically telling us, hey, do this from the beginning. It's better for the residents. And so some of what you mentioned, I'm excited for more information to come out as we get further down the road with construction of accessibility and places for everyone to belong at that place. Because it should feel kind of like the library here that you're coming to and we have a long track record and history of making sure people can get into the public spaces and be healthy together socially, physically and mentally. So thank you for bringing that up and we're excited to give you some news down the road here as we progress. So good points. Thank you for coming. Okay, we'll go to councilwoman Beck, council comments.
Thank you Sarah for your comments. I appreciate the insight. I also want to thank the seven original candidates that declared candidacy back in June as tonight is election night and around eight or 8:30, the first drop of the ballots will happen on the Utah County Government website and it's been a long process, but I just want to thank those candidates for being vulnerable, spending a lot of their own time, resources, money on running a good campaign and every one of them that put their hat in the ring did it because they love Spanish Fork. So thank you so much for the time that you did and did put into this and I just want to wish everyone the best of luck. The Legislative Policy Committee that I sit on met for the last time last week, the last time of the year. We're looking forward to meeting with our local state representatives here at the end of the month and talking to them about some of the things on the upcoming legislative session that will start in January. Obviously, growth and affordable housing is at the top of the list and so we look forward to meeting with our local representatives and letting them know what Spanish Fork is doing to comply with local laws and state laws and be good team players and make a community where everyone feels welcome. And that's all I have.
Thank you, councilwoman Beck. Councilman Marshall.
I was gonna go that way.
Thought you had a minute.
I had minutes? No, I really don't have anything today. So good luck for all the candidates tonight. I hope we're here until about 8:35 so we can see how the election unfolds live and in person.
You're so mean.
Representative White's been part of that before. It's not comfortable, is it?
Terrible.
Okay, we'll get down to councilman Carden.
Yeah, thank you mayor. First, I want to thank Chris and his entire team for the Public Works Awards Banquet where they announced the Department of the Year and I won't take that away from anybody, but it was awesome to hear of all the things our Public Works Department is doing currently, what they're looking forward to and then how they're envisioning or taking the, it's not a vision statement, it's not the right word.
Missions.
Mission statement, sorry. And really applying that to everything that they're doing, the innovation, trying to make sure that we're bringing that to the citizens of Spanish Fork. So thank you Chris and thanks to your entire team for that. Last night, we'll talk about it a little bit more here in a second, but the Festival of Lights, we were able to do a preview of that and really exciting times. Like I said, we'll talk about that more, so I don't want to take away the thunder of that, but thank you to our recs department who have been working since the first of October to make that happen. It doesn't, it seems like it just appears, but to them it definitely does not. There's a lot of blood, sweat and tears that go into making that happen, so please make that a part of your family's Christmas tradition. And then last thing that I have is turn some time over to Kathleen from the chamber.
Speaking of Spanish Fork 101 and the simulation that you were asking about, one of the officers from Imok Police at night approached us on trick or treat on me and he was dressed as a civilian. And I was like, why do I feel so uncomfortable around this man? But he was, that's the whole crazy in the simulation. I think he stabbed me. Anyway, but I couldn't place it, but I was like, I just get this weird feeling about him. I know him, but it's not a good no. He's a really nice guy.
Officer bomber.
I get the same feeling when I.
It sticks with you, you know, like it sticks in your mind. Why do I feel this way? Anyway, alright, so I just have a couple of announcements. Business of the Month, we've celebrated Stokes Market in Salem for Business of the Month. I hadn't been in there in a really long time. It is a beautiful store, so we're excited to have that done. Winter Lights Parade, we're all Winter Lights Parade right now, Saturday, 25th at 7:00 PM. And we're going to be running in reverse this year. So we're going to be staging here at City Hall. Thank you for the parking lot. It should be a lot safer and more organized to staff there instead of where we used to with no lights down by the post office. So we're going to be running from first south and then down towards 900 north is where we'll end. And then we'll do the tree lighting with Santa and all that afterwards. There is a photo contest for the dugout train specifically. They're offering $500 in cash prizes for the best photo of that. So we have details on how to enter that. We'll have that up on our website and social media. Keep an eye out for that. I did talk to the fire department, Seth, about the shooting fireballs, so we've made accommodations for that. He swears it's not going to happen, but you know, we'll see. We're prepared either way.
Team ready to go.
Yes, absolutely. We placed it so the fire truck's not too far away. And then the Christmas party, we'll have December 25th for the Chamber of Bombers. It's going to be hosted at Compassion Mobility. Place of the New Networking Luncheon, Compassion Mobility. December 21st. Is it 25th?
I'm personally busy that day. I don't know. I can't make it, so pardon me.
We'll have to reschedule. Maybe we'll do the 21st. But yeah, December 21st at Compassion Mobility. They're hosting and sponsoring. It's going to be a lot of fun. They'll have Santa, we'll have networking, there's a taco truck and photos and stuff. It's just a great time to come on down. And then the Awards Gala is the annual Awards Gala and Installation Banquet will be January 24th at 6:00 PM at the Amavi Event Center on Main Street. So this is your first reminder to help me with the Mayor's Choice Award.
First of many.
Thinking about that? The first one officially. Perfect. And that's all I've got for you guys. Thank you for the thanks.
And then just the last thing I have is kind of going with the theme of the election. It's been exciting to run the last little bit. First, obviously we're the week of Thanksgiving, so this election has been a little bit longer due to some changes with some state representatives back in DC. But it's been great to, one, run with these individuals, but also to talk with the citizens of Spanish Fork about their concerns that they have, the things that they want to see and what they see for the future. I have lost my voice over the last 24 hours, that's why I'm a little bit raspy, but it's been a great time specifically speaking about those things in the last little bit. So look forward to seeing how things roll out and we will continue forward here in Spanish Fork. So that's all I got, mayor.
Thank you, councilman Carden.
Mayor. Yes, real quick. You may notice we have a sound issue with the podium, so we're actually using the pizza box microphone right there. So any audience conversations may be picked up in that microphone. Just be forewarned.
There you go. If you're in the room, you'll be on the record. There you go. Councilman Euler.
Thank you mayor. With it being just a couple of days before Thanksgiving, I just wanted to express my gratitude for a couple of things. First, I'm thankful that I am a resident of Spanish Fork. Second, I'm thankful that I live in the greatest state in the nation. And third, I'm extremely grateful that I'm a citizen of the United States of America. And that today I have the opportunity to, one, vote and, two, know that my vote will count. I spent two years of my life living in a country where they're currently ruled by a dictator who has been in power for many, many years, has gone overboard with the military and done everything he can to maintain his power. They've written multiple constitutions, they've had multiple elections and he's still there. And so to live in a country where I know that I can vote and that my vote will be counted is something that I greatly appreciate. And I would hope that everybody that lives here would recognize that and would exercise their privilege to vote when you have that opportunity. That's all I have. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilman Euler. Great reminder. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you mayor. Nick, do you have that picture? I just wanted to point out, so recently the veterans of our city had a bench placed. It's at our park by the flag that's in the park. And this has the insignia of each one of the groups of the military. They were really excited about it when they seen it after they got it done. It's a solid bench. It'll be there for many years. It's mounted down on the concrete. Just wanted to point it out there because they were pretty proud about putting that in our city park to recognize the many veterans that have served in our community. We're thankful for them. I also would like to say thanks to the candidates that threw their hat. In my eight years of service, I've campaigned four times and it's not an easy process to do that and I am grateful for those. We've had the opportunity to select because of some council members moving on to some other things. And each one of those times, we had 10 or more people come to want to be a part of the council. And I actually am glad they have votes because that's a tough process, Jesse. For us to sit up here and have them all sit out there and narrow it down to one is, wasn't an easy process when you have 10 people who who absolutely could sit out here and sit up here and do the things they do. I'm grateful for each one of those. The primary, we had Edith Hill, of course, and Mark Warner. And then we had Landon Took, Jackie Larson, Mike Clayson, Jesse Carden, Stacy Beck and Matt Barber. And I just want to wish them luck and tell them thanks. It's not an easy process, but it is so, I'm so grateful to see that many people that want to serve our city and continue this great city. It's a great place to live and raise your family. And I'm absolutely grateful for those who've done that. The Rotary, just want to mention we had the opportunity to go down to Tabitha's Way in our community and start putting together baskets as Tabitha's Way is preparing for Christmas and Thanksgiving as they take out some needed food to our veterans, families that are serving. They take out some to the pantries in our school and they give away a bunch of, a whole bunch of Christmas baskets to people in our community that are in need for food. Tabitha's Way is such an asset to our community and continues to help. And we have the opportunity to be a part of that and I'm grateful for them and the service that they provide in our community. I just want to make a, Sarah left, but I just want to make a comment that a while back when me and Shane Marshall was having a conversation, he summed it up when we're talking about the rec center. Something that is, that we're building in this community that I think is going to be a much appreciated assets. But if we put this much money into a rec center for the enjoyment of the community, that if we cannot allow those people in our community to be a part of that center and use that center, then as a council, we failed and we need to come forward with a good process that allows those who are paying for that rec center to be a part of that. Because it's going to be a neat thing in our community and I think the citizens who are paying for that, we should have the opportunity to use that. Thanksgiving. Thanks Kevin for mentioning the vote and this great nation that we live in. I love history. I'm recently, I've just been reading a book about John Hancock. And if you know who he is, he's the one that wrote the signature and the Declaration of Independence in great big letters. I learned that there are people said that he made that comment and it's not documented, but he said he made it so that King George would know. He was the first one to sign that document and he signed it in big letters so that they could see. John Hancock was a rich man and he gave up everything to bring forth this country. He gave up even family. And at the end, he had to run for his life as British took over some of our communities, Boston in particularly. Grateful for those who looked to the future and knew that what they were doing was bigger than theirselves. And I hope that as the council continues, that we've done that, that we've looked to the future and something bigger than ourselves. I'm so grateful that I'm a part of this community and I've had the opportunity to serve here and be a part of this council and mayor. It's been a great experience. Thanksgiving is a great time to take a minute and just realize your blessings that you have. The abundance that we have in this country and as Kevin mentioned, serving in a country that did not have these blessings and we're one of the few countries in this world that are blessed with so many blessings that we have abundance and such a great opportunity to serve and learn and do things we need to. And I'm grateful for that. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilman Argyle. Well said. Appreciate that. Couple of things that I want to go over in my comments really quick. Number one is a letter that we just recently received from SUU, from Southern Utah University, dated November 16th, 2023. I'd just like to read that if I could. But this is a pretty big deal here, so I'll just read it. It says, Dear Seth Perrins, please join us in congratulating Tara Silver for recently earning the Utah Municipal Clerks Association State Certification through Southern Utah University. This certificate program is designed to prepare clerks and recorders in the state of Utah for the many challenges they face by completing various educational and professional development requirements. We value the opportunity to work with such talented individuals and help them develop their skills. Thank you for supporting your clerk and recorder so they can stay up to date with the best practices and ever-changing legislation. Your friend in learning Tanner Vario, the U MCA Institute Director of Southern Utah University. Tara, congratulations. There's times you had to be thinking, Tara, sometimes of, am I sure I wanted this job? After you interviewed, you got it. But you do a fantastic job. I know the whole council appreciates that. I'm sure Seth appreciates that as well.
Yeah, you gotta remember, like she came in in the summer of, I don't remember what year it was, '21? And cut her teeth on that special, first special election that we've had in probably 20 years, right? She was brand new in her job and helped administer that special election really smoothly, that special selection process, I should say. And did it again and now is, you know, an expert in how to do those special, special selection. I think she's on the lecture circuit now, teaching other cities. We're proud of you Tara and you're doing a great job and that was a great letter to receive today. So congratulations.
Yeah, speak for the council, but I'll bet the candidates that ran this go around as well and have run previous just sure appreciate your communication, your outreach to those that are in a pretty nerve-wracking process, but calming influence in profession as well. Thank you Tara. Okay, next. Yeah, touching on what's already been said a little bit about the election and I'm thinking about councilman Argyle has a couple of meetings left with us before he gets on to bigger and better things in life. But eight years, you know, quite the body of service put into this community and I know we do have a couple of meetings left that we can say our thanks and our gratitude and maybe roast you just a little bit as those times come up. So make sure you're watching television on those meetings as well. But no, it struck me today in the election season as well as it being so close to Thanksgiving and thinking what we're grateful for. And it brought me back to a little bit what Sarah Mitchell said in public comment there of I think the body of work that you'll take away, councilman Argyle, and I know a lot of us that have served on this past time with him is, it's a pretty heavy emphasis on the next generation. You think about, you went through a list a couple of council meetings ago of things that we've done. But some big, some big projects of figuring out an all abilities park for the kids, for kids with special needs. And obviously that starts with a generous donor and then resources at the city and being cognizant, professional about how to get something together. and, and being cognizant, professional about how to get something together like that, which is held up not only in the state of Utah, but routinely visitors from outside of our state, outside of the West that come and see that facility and can kind of feel of how important that is for our community. That and then you, where you sit here in a library for the youth, the generation that'll be able to continue to learn and grow and be proud of their city when they come into a place that, that just feels like Spanish Fork already, even, even though it's still pretty new, is, is big for the next generation. And the, not to be overshadowed, the soon-to-be recreation center. That'll be a generation of, of kids and families that will enjoy that. So just those three facilities. There's many others, many other projects and initiatives that have happened over, over that time. But you look at those, those three themselves and not only, again, families, but, but emphasis on the youth and, and that next generation is going to be something you should be proud of. I know I'm, I'm proud of it with you, but, but it's going to be something that, that goes down in your family and it should is, is helping out with some, some legacy that'll, that'll outlive all of us. So, so good work.
Thank you.
Lastly, yesterday I got to spend a little time in our neighboring city. Mayor Packard's city of Springville. Representative White represents Mapleton, Springville, and Spanish Fork in his duties. Is that the only cities Representative White, or do you do anything else? Okay, he has a day job too, but in, in his political life, he represents those three cities. And this was, was over in Springville yesterday at the Foundry of Gary Lee Price Studios. If you've seen some beautiful bronzes around Utah and really around the world, a lot of them are in Springville. But, but there's some, some neat ones all over the place. He invited us, myself and Amber, along with some, some people that flew in from all over the place to, to witness what they call a pour. And so they, they have casts that they rolled out of an oven there. And you can see those men in spacesuits pouring bronze into those casts that are at 1,900 degrees. You can see me, the brave person that puts Amber in front of me. But when they started pouring that, it was cold outside. It was kind of too hot to be standing that close when they, when they were pouring it. But some, some very neat things, influential things, stuff that we're excited to announce coming up that will be part of, of a project that will just have more public art in Spanish Fork to celebrate. And some of it we've, we've alluded to already of Chief Wakara. But this was neat. This was some of the pieces of Chief Wakara. Some other pieces of what they call the Statue of Responsibility. If you've ever seen that, it's, it's kind of one of his more famous sculptures, but it's two arms clasping, clasping like that. If you wanted to Google it, you'd find out a lot more about it. But it's all over the world in some different places and, and that was part of, of that pour as well. I thought about what to say besides the Price family has been generous to come meet and talk with us about how we can, we can have some, some really good pieces of public art. Councilman Marshall was key in getting us a spot reserved to have some of that. And so it's going to be very neat coming up to, to talk about where that's going to be. We're really excited in the early next year to, to kind of talk more about that. But I thought when, when the Pricees invited us here, we were just going to go over there and witness it. But I thought maybe the three best phrases I've heard in my life have been, you know, 20 years ago, my wife saying, you know, yes, I'll marry you and I love you. That was pretty important. And then maybe three kids saying, you know, daddy, I love you or something. But I think the one that tops it all is Lisa Price saying in, in Springville City Limits, welcome Mayor Mendenhall and Amber to, to Springville. You're just the best city ever, the home of pride and progress. And I was like, all right, in Springville, you know? And so I'm sure Mayor Packard will try to get me back in some, some level of that. But it was, it was awesome to see, awesome to witness with, with all those people. And, and I'll just tell you the, the impression that the city has made. We've got good ambassadors. You just celebrated the 101 class. That'll be fantastic ambassadors of Spanish Fork. You already are. But, but thank you. Thank you for, for being who you are and spreading, I guess, a little bit of, of what your community is in, in the home of pride and progress because people are noticing. So neat thing to, to be a part of. So thank you for that. Anything else? Good? Council comments, good? Okay. All right, we'll go to, we'll go to our next agenda item. It's Spanish Fork 101, the Festival of Lights, which turned on last night. So when you drive by Powerhouse Road, keep your eyes on the road, right Dale? Unless you, unless you get down in there and then keep your lights off and eyes on a little bit of a road as you drive around.
I was all excited that Seth told us to present from our chair. I wasn't even going to have to stand up. Way to go, Brian. Ruined a good thing, man. He's too efficient, isn't he? Well, I'm excited to be here. I apologize that it's me again, but I tried to get some other people to come and present Festival of Lights. You may recall that a few, a couple of meetings ago, my events coordinator tore up her script and threw it at me. She didn't throw it at me. She just set it down. So I'm here tonight and not Emily.
She probably said something like, not falling for that again.
She wasn't going to buy off on it one more time, right? No, she had some other commitments or she honestly would have been here. Because she's very passionate about the Festival of Lights. Her and her new assistant, Lily Callahan, I don't know if many of you have met her. If you were up at Festival of Lights during the day, their hands are blistered. They're, they're taping, they're replacing rope light, they're replacing bulbs. I mean, just nonstop every day. And her and Janet, or those two, and Janice Addison have just been outstanding. Along with Dallin and, and Naulu and Rafael Mendez, who are there, they help set up structures. And those guys spend a lot of, a lot of hours there in order to, to provide this festival for us and we appreciate them. Along with many others, my staff, we work as a team, obviously. And Bronco and his recreation team does a lot of work on this as well. So the 31st Annual Festival of Lights. I know this is going to make me sound old, but I've been here for 27 of them. That makes me old, I guess. But it's been fun to watch this thing grow. And we've got statistics on numbers of cars that we've had come through here clear back to the beginning. It's kind of, kind of overwhelming to look at the spreadsheet that's 27 years wide. But it's grown and continues to grow. We have, we had 20,000 cars come through last year and we're averaging somewhere around 18 over the last several years. So let me just, as a, as a tidbit, if you don't want to wait in line for a really long time, come Tuesday through Thursday. How's that? There's your tidbit of the week.
Wait, what else we get?
Huh? It'll save you, save you from having to wait a while, is all I'm saying. But all of, it's interesting because all of the proceeds for this go right back into the event. So my kids, their very favorite thing is to play Where's Waldo? Like where's the new, where's the new item? They've come for all these years. They still love it. They're passionate about it. Now their kids are passionate about it and they all want to know where the new thing is. And so that money that we have, you know, other than paying for the initial cost of the, of the festival itself goes into, you know, re, new structures and stuff. So, and refurbishing old ones. So we're excited about that. The mayor did mention, can you throw up the new route for me, please? Not throw it up, but put it up there. Sounds better, doesn't it? So last year, we did change the route. We, we love this. This is so much safer than putting. For those of you that don't know, we had cars backed up on Highway 6 two years ago clear to Small Mart. Now that's a big line. And it's also a lot of pretty fast traffic in some, 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 some tough conditions, right? With weather and we've got a line of cars sitting there. It just, I'm, I'm, I'm thanking our lucky stars that nothing has happened. It just kind of dawned on us that that's probably not a good idea. So we've rerouted everything and people were really good last year. We tried to put people out there to help them, help them. We got a lot of signage up there. The residents around this area have been very gracious. Don't park your cars on the road. We might have people in front of your driveway. We're trying not to do all that stuff. But the neighbors have been very nice. But you see, you'll go up Canyon Road and down to River Bottoms Road and then over to Powerhouse Road, which is where the park is. So you no longer have to come up Highway 6 and go down. The line is going to form just as indicated there. So anybody coming off Highway 6 will, especially eastbound, will turn at the Small Mart on Spanish Fork Parkway. So just be aware for the million viewers at home, we're trying to get people educated, right? So they know that this is now the new route. And we're, we're excited about that. Let me see, what did I miss? We're going to be, so we open on Thanksgiving night, which is day after tomorrow. Do you got your turkey ready?
I don't hate a host this year, so no.
Oh, lucky you.
Ask one of these guys.
I have two. I'm ready.
You got your turkeys ready? Well, I won't up you because I already had my Thanksgiving. Just so you know. It saves us from having to, yeah, we did. It saves us from having to do the in-law thing all every other year. So we do ours a Sunday before Thanksgiving.
Love that idea.
So we get to have them every year. And then they can go wherever they want on Thanksgiving.
Do we want them every year?
We'll go out to dinner. So Thanksgiving to New Year's from 6 to 10, okay? We ask for your patience. Again, most people know, this is, the interesting thing to me is this is, this is a lot like Fiesta Days. This is tradition for a lot of families, as it is with mine. And, and it's fun to see the same people come back year after year because it has become a family tradition, which is what holidays, you know, it's really all about is family and, and getting together and creating those traditions and creating those historical moments that'll, that'll carry on throughout generations. So I appreciate again the mayor and council administration supporting us in this, this festival. We're excited to kick it off again. There are a bunch of new structures. Did you guys find them all last night?
Yep, number one.
How many were there, Kevin?
12.
Okay, nice try. There aren't that many. I'm not going to tell you what they are because that's half the fun, right? But anyway, enjoy. Are there any questions, anything I missed that you'd like the public to be aware of? We're excited to kick it off again. We do have a new trail on the shoulder of River Bottoms Road that Jamie and his crews and the Streets Department graciously paved for us. So we've got, we've got places that we think are safe for the cars to line up on. It's the shoulder right there once you hit River Bottoms Road. There's a nice new paved shoulder that you can stay on. And, and the, the public safety folks are helping us out with trying to calm traffic coming off the hill on Powerhouse Road. That's always a concern for us. And they're doing a good job helping us navigate those waters so that we can keep people safe.
Hey Dale, there's a little parking area just as you come out of that neighborhood that's right there by the church. Is that an issue if people are parking there and they're lining up? Are they allowed to park there? Are those residents aware that they should be moving? I'm getting head nuts from staff, so, okay, sounds good.
No, they're not allowed to park there. Yes, they, no. They were really great last year, by the way. The HOA president, and I've talked to some of them again this year. Their, their Latter Day Saint wards and stuff have been really good to pass the word around, get your, because they, they use that shoulder quite a bit to park extra vehicles along it. And I had quite a lengthy conversation today with one of the ladies that lives there concerned about why we can't do it. And I drove by there last night and I literally had to come out into the road and come back to get around some cars that were parked in that parking lot. So they've, they've been very gracious for these few weeks to, to move their vehicles. And, and Matt and his crews are helping us to be able to, to spread that word to those folks. So yeah, we've been in touch with them for quite some time now. They've gotten things on their doors as well as phone calls and, and other announcements. So we hope we've addressed all of the concerns there.
Last year, we did a number of, with this, with this change, we did a number of signage additions and tried a few things. With everything that Dale and his crews experienced and experimented with last year, they put up better signs and, and really, I think we call on the drivers to heed those, right? Don't block streets, don't block driveways, don't be that guy. But down on this street where you're talking about, Kevin, with, with that little parking lot and along that section of Bottoms Road, really, I'm really grateful for the work that our, our crews did to widen that shoulder because that we experienced, what we experienced there last year was kind of a dead, nobody could drive in that direction. So it became kind of difficult for them. So cars can push off to the shoulder, two lanes of traffic can still flow there.
So you were talking about this.
Yeah, thank you. It should work really well. And we're always open to feedback. So I'm sure we'll get some more feedback this year on, on things that, you know, we probably didn't address or, or missed last year because we were focused on some of these other issues and we'll, we'll keep refining. This is a significantly better route for safety. You know, it definitely causes a little bit of inconvenience for somebody here or there. We, we recognize that. But during COVID, when those lines started to get to Highway 6 and then grow down Highway 6, we realized this is just unsustainable. So we're, we're grateful for the ingenuity to come up with this path and for the tweaks that we've been able to make. So great job, staff.
Yeah, our, our longest line last year got right to this intersection.
So close.
Which is Spanish Fork Parkway, Small Mart's right there. So it's worked really well so far. We have put, and I, I need to mention too, our parks crews have come out and domed the title of traffic control. We had people at a couple of different intersections just to help people know where to go, orient them to a new, a new pattern. Because we've been doing the same pattern for 29 years. So it's kind of habits are hard to break. So they've been real troopers to be out there on, on evenings and holidays. And, and we'll have one of them out there again just as a precaution to make sure that, that things go well.
Hey Dale, you mentioned that financially, this is sustainable. It's self-sufficient, I guess, right? In fact, it makes enough to put back into it every single year. Could you at some point maybe share those numbers with us just to be super transparent with everyone? How much we spend, how much we take in?
Yeah, sure.
I think it's, it's fairly unique for a public agency to be, have something like that. So it'd be cool to see the numbers.
Yeah. Seth's looking them up really fast. I don't have them like he does.
It could be.
But that's why he's the city manager.
Dale, while you, maybe while he's finding that, the trailer, the green part on the map there, where you're going to have people that sometimes youth groups and families like to meet and get in one car, save a buck, a couple, but, and then get on a trailer and have fun. That's, that's up at the, that's up by Little Acorn now, not in the golf course parking lot, right?
Yeah, it is. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. We are, we are attempting to, that became a little bit problematic for us last, last year. Because as those trailers are coming off this hill, obviously the line is all formed this way. And we do have signs that say to let the trailers in, right? People get a little bit cranky when they've been sitting in their car for an hour or so. And, and so this became difficult for us to manipulate and get trailers in here and have people wait. We're really working right now to try to see if we can't find another location that will be more amenable along this route. We haven't got permission to do some of that yet, but we're looking for it. But yes, the answer to your question is, right now, that's where they are supposed to go because they aren't going to be able to access the golf course parking lot. So yes, good question.
I think my question is like people coming from Mapleton, or I usually go on River Bottoms Road. We can't get in the other ways. We obviously need to go to the back of the, the line, so we're going to all be rerouted. We obviously need to go to the back of the ru- the line, so we're going to all be rerouted to the back of the line, right?
You're coming from Mapleton?
No, I'm coming from like River Bottoms Road, but then the whites coming from Mapleton. So we would all, we would be coming from a different direction. We still just go to the back of the line?
So what, what our signage shows is we, we, our signage directs people to come this way. If they'll come off this exit right here at this light.
Okay.
Then they can either go this way, or if the line is already formed, the signs all say to go get to the back of the line.
Okay.
Right, but if not, they do come off this way and come around so that they don't run into this conflict. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
And if I recall, last year, we really only got up on Canyon Road maybe five nights, six nights? It wasn't that many nights?
No, there wasn't, there wasn't a ton. So if there's nobody there, you obviously come right down 3,400 east, uh, and get onto Canyon Road. But when the line's there, it's obvious there's a line there. And so that's what our signage directs them to do if they're coming off of Highway six.
If you're coming on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday night, you could probably just come up River Bottoms Road and stay on it, get right in the back of the line, perhaps even on Powerhouse Road. It really is night specific.
Okay.
And time specific. You come at six on a Tuesday, you'll drive right in.
Right. So whites, you guys know how to get there now?
Every time you say whites, both of you, I'm thinking of whites.
Yeah, whites, yeah, well.
Like, he's not here.
Whites aren't here.
Where is he?
Sometimes the menden halls, if, if the line's backed up, we just, we just, we're on River Bottoms Road and we saved eight bucks and we say, kids, look down at the lights in the park. Drive just a little bit slower and.
Okay, Mayor.
Salem and get ice cream.
I love you, but that's a really bad idea.
You're so cheap.
You're ripping off your kids.
Sorry about that.
You need to get them in the, in there where they can see all the cool ones.
They'll get there a couple of times.
So to Councilman Marshall's question, we spend hard costs by $80,000 and then bring in revenue of about 160 and that difference is the labor of, of installing, uh, and taking down, changing out with about, uh, seven or eight bodies involved for a month and a half or so, setting it up, changing things out. So it covers those costs there, but it's, and this is one thing that we've, we've itemized in the budget. So it's re- it is really clear for people that they're looking on the line, on, on the budget to find the detail associated with them.
Yeah. Yeah, good question.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Dale.
Thanks, Dale.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dale. Festival of Lights already here, happens, gets here quick. Okay, uh, that takes us to item number seven on our agenda tonight, the consent items. Two items, A and B, minutes of Spanish of the last meeting and then the San Miguel Agreement, Due Diligence Extension. Uh, I would, if there's no questions on the consent items, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Salute.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Carden. Uh, roll call vote for the consent items, Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Consent items are approved, takes us to new business. First item, there's A through G here, appointment of senior advisory board members. We could have kept you up here, Dale.
Yeah, didn't know you were going to be that quick.
Yep.
Okay, uh, yeah, we have, uh, one new board member that we're proposing be appointed. Ned Jolly is a senior advisory board member. Um, and also we're asking for a, uh, we're proposing to reappoint Jerry Hanson, Dan Bachelor, and Janice Orr, uh, to the senior advisory board. Did I get all those right, Kevin?
Yep.
Kevin, we got a, uh, a little bit of a write-up on Ned and his wife Angel. If you want to, do you want to read that?
Yeah.
Help me to read it, Dale?
Yeah, sure.
Ned and his wife Angel have been Utah residents for 15 years. They have seven children between the two of them. Over the last 10 years, Ned has volunteered in many capacities at our senior, at our senior center. Special event committee, planning, decorating, setting up, assisted with setting up tables and chairs, as well as changing out the tablecloths, assisting with emptying the trash and anything else asked to do. Ned enjoys spending time with family, attending his grandchildren's sports events, and gardening.
Perfect. I should ask if they're here, Ned, they're not. I don't see any of your members here. Okay. Any questions about, uh, these, uh, advisory board members? If not, uh, I would entertain a motion, we need to make a motion for this.
Yes, please, accept them.
I'd, I'd make a motion accepting those advisory board members.
I move to accept the reappointment of Jerry Hanson, Dan Bachelor, and Janice Orr, and to, and to appoint Ned Jolly as senior advisory board members.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Perfect. Those advisory board members are approved. I think our auditor is, uh, on his way from Nephi auditing other cities. Uh, and so we're going to, we're going to push item B for a minute until, uh, he gets here to do our independent financial audit report for 2023. We'll go to item C, Stevens Hill Annexation Acceptance for Further Study Approval Request. Mr. David Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We've been through a number of annexations in recent years. This one, um, actually has been in process to some degree with staff as various property owners have been involved with a proposal to have their properties annexed now for actually a little bit over a year. Um, the configuration of the annexation as proposed has changed recently. And with that, I'd say it's being revived, really. The Development Review Committee met and, uh, discussed this proposal last week and recommended that at this point in the process, really at the front end, it simply be accepted for, excuse me, accepted for further study. Um, should the council tonight take that action, then that simply would start a fairly well-prescribed, defined process through which, um, the proposal would be studied, data would be gathered. There's a feasibility report that staff would generate in advance of having the annexation, uh, presented to the Planning Commission for a recommendation on the annexation and any zoning that would be assigned at the time of annexation. And subsequent to that, it would be back on a council agenda at some future date, likely a number of months down the road, at which time you could make a final decision about approving the annexation or not. In this case, um, subject properties are located west of the airport. They're identified there on the map that we have. As part of the staff report, you can see just on the upper right-hand corner of the aerial image that we have in the staff report, the runway, that's the best landmark that I think we can use in terms of describing where the subject properties are. Um, and, uh, well, at this point in time, that's where we're at. Uh, front end, uh, very little effort's been put into trying to analyze whether or not, um, this is the right time in staff's view to have the properties annexed. I will say that they are located within the city's annexation policy plan and usually for us as staff, that's a good place to start. If they are, generally speaking, we bring annexations forward with a recommendation to study them further.
Dave, there would be two public hearings when, once the study is done, correct? One in Planning Commission and one here in City Council?
This is a little bit unique. It would just be with the City Council.
Just City Council.
Yeah, not the Planning Commission.
Perfect, thank you.
Dave, the growth boundary, does that get adjusted after the annexation? If the annexation is approved, or is that part of the annexation study?
You know, that's really up to the City Council for properties that, um, are not within the, the growth boundary and typically we don't extend the growth boundary beyond the city's boundary. So, um, that would be one thing that the City Council could consider as to whether or not, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but let's say for example that the council is ready to move forward and annex the properties, then perhaps another conversation would be had about whether or not the growth boundary should be amended at the same time to expand, to include the subject properties as well. Okay. They'd be separate actions, though.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any other questions for Dave about, uh, about this item C?
Dave, I, I mean, it's for study, you're going to, we're going to go study. I don't think there's a huge problem, I don't have a huge problem moving forward for study, but it's, I think, just like the last time we had an annexation in this area, um, access to this piece of our city is difficult today. Um, there was a nice road that connected to Fourth North, but now there's an airport in the way.
Yep.
So as we study this, let's try to identify how we access this or how it would be accessed.
Appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions for Dave on this 208 acres out west to, uh, to initiate the study process? If not, I would entertain a motion on item C.
I approve, I move to approve the Stevens Hill A- Annexation Acceptance for Further Study Approval Request.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here, Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Item C is approved. See the auditor here yet. Item D, uh, takes us to a resolution supporting an amendment of the Verk Industrial Park Project area.
Mayor and Council, you know that the Verk Industrial Project, uh, Industrial Park Project area was created to help encourage economic development and infrastructure in the area of the west side of the city surrounding the airport. Um, we've had two recent annexations, the GWC annexation and the Stockman Flats annexation that are adjacent to that project area and could be included in it. The process to do that is by adopting a resolution giving consent. This first map shows the annexation areas, the, the GWC is the one that's south of Highway 77. It's in the red hatch. And then the Stockman Flats annexation is in the solid red. Uh, the green hatch shows wetland areas that are associated with Utah Lake. And then there's another drawing showing similar wetland areas on the western part of that Stockman Flats annexation. You pop that one up there.
So is the Stockman Flats not annexed yet?
No, it is. Both of these are annexed.
So that, that boundary line is just not updated then?
Yeah.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
No, that boundary line is the boundary line of the Verk Industrial Project area.
Oh, it's not the city boundary?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was the city boundary at the time.
No, because it goes all the way, if you look at. Maybe you can scroll down or maybe not. It goes down south of the boundary.
No, you're right.
I usually am.
Ooh. We're going to say that, though, for this purpose, that dotted line is the current Verk boundary.
It wouldn't apply because it goes down.
Just right there. Just for hypothetically speaking.
Bottom line, they are annexed into the city, the line is just not updated.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I wanted to show you the wetlands area on the western part of Stockman Flats. That, so again, that northern area will be, that's unreliable, will be excluded from the project area.
So both pieces of property have some wetlands that are excluded?
And you exclude the wetlands from the project area?
Yes, because it, there's no development potential with those and better just to protect them.
And in particular, these wetlands are part of the flood. These are part of the lake flood plain, right? I, I think that's the right term, Chris, part of the flood plain. Uh, there are wetland areas within the project area and they just have to, have to work around them and, and incorporate the wetlands into what they do. But these are specific areas that are connected to the lake and there's no reason to bring them in.
You can see on this property, a lot of that is under cultivation right now. It's been used, it's not part of the lake, so.
But there are, like, um, you just said, there are wetlands internal to those pieces of property.
Uh huh.
It's not, we're not saying those are free rein. We're just saying we're going to preclude the ones on the top, the north edge because they're touching the lake then.
Correct.
And this year, they were underwater.
Yeah.
Other years are not. Got any questions about?
Any questions for Vaughn on that?
Why, why not a public hearing?
Yeah.
This is not our, um, project. It's the Utah, the important project area. They will have a public hearing.
Oh, they will, to bring these two in?
To amend the, their project plan for this project area.
So this is our, our signal to them that we're good with it?
Yes, that, so the process to, for them to amend their plan is the same process for them to create the plan. And so we had to give consent initially and to amend it, we have to give consent if.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
You know, all terms that we've already agreed to be subject on this property as well?
Yes, there's no change in, in the interlocal agreement, the, the tax differential, um, share. That's all the same for the whole project, including this newly added area.
The, the, the board for the port, will they have the public hearing? Will they come on site to do that? Is that typically something they do virtually? You can attend virtually or participate?
You can still attend virtually, absolutely, yeah. I think, where was the January meeting, Twilla? Sorry, the December meeting is Twilla, the January was Salt Lake.
Yeah, the January is the capital.
Yeah, the capital. So they're, they'll have a, a meeting in December wherein they'll take up this topic, I think, and that one's in Twilla. And then they're planning right now for their January board meeting to be held at the Capitol.
Okay.
And, and they, they always take comment from both public in per, in person and watching virtually.
Okay.
I wanted to point out some language in the resolution that should be updated. We have two different maps and either we can get them to be joined or we can use some revised language in the resolution. If you look at section one of the resolution, um, talking about consent to amend the project area, second sentence begins specifically, I'd, I'd suggest it be worded specifically the city consents to adding to the project area, the area shown on Exhibit A attached here too, which represents the GWC annexation and the Stockman Flats annexation, less the portions of the Stockman Flats annexation that are part of Utah Lake and associated wetlands. And then that final sentence, the wetlands are excluded are more particularly described, Exhibit B. We have legal descriptions for both, they just did not make it together into one unified map.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Vaughn. Any other questions for Vaughn on this, uh, item? Okay, if not, I, I would entertain a motion on item D.
Once, uh, I just want to make one comment on it, sorry. Um, is, it makes sense to me to add this in. One, because when we annexed it, it was industrial and to get the, the infrastructure there, if they're part of the inland port, that can happen. And also to, uh, for the mitigation that's going to have to take place in some of those wetlands that we're talking about, this will give them that opportunity. Also the studies that are needed to make that happen. So I think this makes sense in a lot of ways, so.
I guess a question that I've got, part of being in the inland port is to receive or get help with the infrastructure. Have we determined that these properties actually need that? Or is the infrastructure already there as far as utilities? I know roads, yeah, they would need roads put in, but as far as the other utilities, are they already at the doorstep of these properties?
It's a great question. In fact, that's probably the key question that we reviewed for some of these, uh, the desire for these properties to be in there. The, right now, the proposal that you have, you have put together, we put together for this is that it's regional infrastructure is what the port, uh, the project area would pay for. And the majority of that regional work is, uh, already developed for this area as you've outlined, most of it's right along that Highway 77. But there are some regional transportation costs that are really expensive to widen that highway to its full extent and a bridge across Dry Creek, which doesn't seem like it should be that big of a deal. It's not a very big river. Uh, even the name, right, it's a creek, but it's a bridge. And bridges are really expensive. And so I think that's one of the major pieces of, of infrastructure that this project area is, that this additional area is specifically looking for, uh, the potential of assistance, uh, which that would widen the road and really make, uh, that highway more accessible for anybody that's driving on it as it goes over that spot. So I think that's the main focus for this, uh, for this group wanting to come in.
Yeah, that makes sense. So had that bridge already been in place, had the roads been in place that we didn't need any regional help with, it wouldn't make sense possibly to bring this into the port area.
Yeah, it would make less sense for the need of, of funds to go out. You still have the, the differential that their project will create.
Create.
And, and those funds that can be used project wide, so that, that will still be a benefit to the project.
Okay, thank you. Which I think, oh, good.
How many acres are those two?
Ninety.
Huh? Ninety?
Ninety.
Ninety acres?
So it's ninety extra acres.
All right.
Ninety is a portion of what?
Altogether, it's between three and 350 acres.
It would be added to?
It would be added to.
So you have the tax increment for additional 350 acres.
Exactly.
Added to the overall project.
Right. Which, that's the point I was going to make, Kathleen's already left, but there's some people, some, some areas, some places and some existing businesses that are inside the port project area now that, especially some, some businesses that are recognized worldwide and pretty big in their industry and top performers in their industry that have talked to us about the expansion of their facilities, where they're currently at. And part of the attractiveness of the, the project being in the port is when that tax increment does come in, even though it might not, this might not be the place where a lot of public infrastructure needs to go with some other places, that increment can be leveraged by the other existing businesses, some of them even on the other side of the freeway that are needing to expand their facilities and can tap into some of that to, to get the impetus and get the ball, ball rolling. So not only is it, is it some of the new, you know, some of the new players that are coming to town, but some of the existing people that are there can benefit from this increment going up and being in the project area as it goes up.
Yeah, you don't have to use it just in these two properties, throughout the entire project area.
Correct. It's going to be available to some of those, some of those people who have already expressed interest. Yeah, this is, this is what's holding this up from maybe some utility, huge utility costs to do their next expansion. That's a substation that's got to be by them or something. And, and now they can use some of these tax increment funds.
The other aspect to that also then is if this, if these properties are already located next to infrastructure, utilities, pipes, whatever, that will make it easier for these to develop properties quicker than other locations, which means that you can get increment from these properties sooner than you would from other properties.
Yep, I think that's all part of the equation. And, and while we're talking about all those different improvements and some of the increment from the project area, this, just something Councilman Marshall commented on with the previous annexation study that you accepted, this, the, the Verk project area will build or, or fund a lot of some of those major roads that will come in, create that access for that area to the north, to Highway 77, replacing that, that road that was cut by the railroad expand, or the airport expansion, and to the east toward Main Street. So, so within a few years, there should be a, a new route, both to the north and the east, that will connect that area from the Stevens Hill annexation, which will be a great improvement for those areas. And that will come through, through revenues derived by this tax differential from the, the Verk project area.
Okay.
Second. Dave, just to be very clear, so that there's no miscommunication with, between us and the public, the zone that was there prior to this is the exact same zone that's there post this. There's no zone change, there's no different mix of development there. It's not an LA port, it's not an Oakland port. It's a financing tool to make these infrastructure improvements. Yes?
Couldn't have said it better.
Okay.
I'd simply add, there's no question of land use. You know, whether this is in the port project area or if it were to develop outside of the project area, I think the development would look the same. Our hope is that, and I think Seth explained this well also, that having it in the port project area may accelerate the development and open up some opportunities therefore for development elsewhere.
It's probably a better way of saying it, that it's the same land use, it's the same development potential, it's just at a different timeframe.
Yeah.
Okay. I, as I look at this map with the little green on the top of it, it's called the Inland Port Authority and it, without that green, with the green part of the project, it's now connected to a water body that could generate boat traffic. Like, I'm glad it's not there, because that's not the intent whatsoever, right? So it's, it's still landlocked, it doesn't have access to the, to Utah Lake.
I don't think Utah Lake is deep enough to do that kind of work.
Especially right there.
Right there, right?
But it's, I mean.
Haven't seen any barges on Utah Lake.
Well, the party barge.
The party barge.
I can totally see Councilman Argyle has a party barge. I feel like that's right up his alley.
We used to have one.
There we go. There we go, I knew it.
He'll be delivering goods.
Bring your own fishing boat.
Across the lake to the port project right there. You're going to have to declare, we're going to have to double check the hull of that boat. We're going to clear it before it lands.
Shallow water.
All right. Okay, any other questions for staff or anybody on item D? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution supporting this amendment.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the resolution supporting the amendment of the Verk Industrial Project area for the findings contained in the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Argyle. A roll call vote for this item. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item D is approved.
Yes, real quick, Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
I guess just one more thing on that, Dave versus Seth. Would it be possible when that does go before the inland port? I, I would like to watch that. If there's a link available to that, I'd be curious to watch that and see if there are any public comment.
Yeah, for sure, we'll get that out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Watch for that, we'll get that out and, and make sure it's out to the, the public when they have the meeting.
December 5th, Dave, I think is when the, the first meeting is that will be in Twilla. I think it's December 5.
I think it's January 10.
And January 10. So you can mark your calendars now, but that December 5th will be the day you have your canvas for reference of time. I mean, it's usually at three or so in the afternoon, like, one or sometime in the afternoon. But we'll get that out for you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. See our auditor still, we'll go to item E for 300 East Waterline Change Order number two. Mr. Chris Thompson.
Okay, this is the same project change order that came to you not too long ago, where we had a bunch of waterline breaks, Third East and, and around Fourth North. So we added some, some replacement there to a project that had gone, had just been finishing up with a contractor that had done an outstanding job and, and had really competitive bidding, were able to just use those numbers. We got that started right away as, as the one project finished. And then we continued to look at the type of pipe we had going further south and, and the condition that it's in and, and the break history on it. And are recommending that, that we do three more blocks. So from Third North to Center Street on 300 East and get that replaced as well. It's our feeling that, that, that may not last as long as the repaving would last on 30s that we have planned for next year. And so it's our recommendation to approve the second change order, which would keep this contractor going for another few months to get, get these three more blocks done. They've been moving very quickly and doing a great job for us, so. It's about $300,000, it's about $100,000 per block.
Chris, how long do you anticipate them taking to get that finished?
It, it takes about three weeks per block, so probably a couple of months.
So before construction season and then we start resurfacing and going from there?
Yeah, so, so they'll get this done, they'll do what's called a cold patch. And they'll, they'll kind of get it so that it'll go through winter. And then in the spring is when we'll do all the construction work on the roundabout, the signals and, and the projects that we have to emphasize that as a, as a north-south corridor. And, and then at the end of that, we'll do what's called a microseal. It's a, it's a small, it's not quite an overlay, but it's a really thick, durable seal that, that we put on.
Perfect. Shane's looking at me because he's not an engineer, he knows I'm not an engineer, so he's just giving him a look.
I was just going to see how Chris explained it. Originally, this was competitively, competitively bid, correct? Have the prices changed since that original bid?
No.
The unit prices have stayed the same?
The same. And they're great pricing.
Yeah.
Because we, so what we did is we, we looked at some of the other projects similar that we bid and, and these prices, this pricing was on the lower end. And the quality was actually, this, this is our best contractor.
So we awarded the low bid and we're just using those rates throughout?
Continuing to go.
Okay. When was the original contract awarded?
I don't know the exact award time, but it, it finished about a month ago. So we were able to, timing wise, get them going and, and so we'll never have to pay a mobilization fee.
Yeah, I noticed that it wasn't in there, that's awesome.
Funding this from the water fund of the cash reserves that we've built on?
Yeah, and, and these projects have been budgeted out. It's just, we're doing them in, in a different orders, basically. So budget wise, we're fine.
Thank you, Chris.
Good idea to do it before we have to dig it up.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good, so, so the worry is, is you want to get this done as quickly as you can, so the trenches start settling. And no matter how hard you pack the soil back in as you do the trenches, there, there's always a little bit more settling that can be done. So the sooner we can get it done, the better. And then summertime, we like to wait until school is out before we do a lot of, a lot of construction work. It should be, it should be done.
Chris, as you've worked on other roads, you've realized, okay, we need to do this stretch as well. As we do this stretch, is, is there the possibility that you'll recognize, okay, there's, there still continues to be more pipe work that we need to do?
I don't think it's likely here because this is the rest of the way. Now, all new waterline, yeah, during the, through this whole stretch, which is great. I, I think that's unlikely. I mean, there's, there's a few areas where we're looking at, but I think we'll be fine. With a microseal, isn't an overlay. We, we don't plan on it lasting for more than seven years, right? Seven to 10 sometimes, but, so we're just trying to look in the next seven years what, what wirelines probably will meet critical mass for being replaced in that, so.
It's also nice to have this done before we do work on Main Street next year.
Yeah, yeah, the more we can get done before any of that work, the better.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions for Chris on this? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion on item E.
I move to approve the 300 East Wireline Change Order.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Euler, a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item E is approved. Takes us to item F. Thank you, Chris, you're still here with the Pady Aviation Business Park Hangar Ground Development Lease.
We, we are so excited about this item. In fact, I'd like to invite our airport manager, Christian Davis, and I saw Brad Mertz. Could you both come up? We probably don't have time for a long speech, but if you could be here to answer some questions. I want to give some recognition. Christian Davis was, made our new airport manager and immediately got thrown into some pretty aggressive negotiations is what, what we like to call them. I, I was always worried he'd be scared away from the job by how aggressive these negotiations were, but, but he has a great demeanor about him and he's, he's patient and he follows through and he gets things done in a way that really brought all the players together on this. And I just really, I'm grateful to have Christian at our airport. He's doing a fantastic job. He's done most all of the legwork on this and just really are excited about this. These two projects that we're bringing before you for leases will probably double the revenue, more than double the revenue at the airport. And that's a really good thing because airport historically with Springville and Spanish Fork has been a little bit dependent on city budgets to, to get through because of its size. And, and we foresee a time when, when that will not be true anymore and this, this airport will be a vibrant, self-sustaining entity for the city. Anyway, just a nod to those involved with vibrant. All right, so that being said, this is the first agreement where you have, let's see, this is 2700 North, it will be renamed Dry Creek Parkway and it will run to the new interchange being constructed. Construction should be starting any time now on I-15 by the Ford dealership. This is Main Street. And what we love is that you'll get off of the exit, the new exit off of I-15 and it'll take you straight into the front door of the airport where we'll have all these hangers. You'll have a fixed base operator here. There's plans for a restaurant in there overseeing the runway, which will be a fantastic venue for a restaurant. A lot of, a lot of hangers which are in need in this area would be constructed. So we're really excited about this, this project. It has two phases, phase one and phase two. The total, just to lease the land so that they can develop, is almost $200,000 a year. So that, those payments will begin immediately as soon as these lease agreements are signed. And so that is a significant boost to the, to the airport. Once, once all these hangers get constructed, then, then those hangers, the land underneath the hangers will be leased to the hangar owners at a significantly higher lease amount. And so this is a great development for the airport.
So Chris, does that, do the hangar leases supersede the overall lease or you give both of them? Will you vote them?
It's a good question. So we have two types of ground leases. We have development ground leases and then we have building ground leases. A development ground lease is eight cents per square foot. And it basically ties up an area of land and it says this is all reserved for Pady Aviation, which is the applicant here.
And that's the amount that would bring in, 200,000 a year?
Correct.
And that's just for phase one or are we looking at?
That's for both phases. So they have to pay, they will have to pay eight cents per square foot for all of this, for both phases. That ties up the land, reserves it for them, so that they get to be the developers of that land. Okay? Now, as, we'll call this phase one, as this develops, then the public land, it's kind of like your public right-of-way roads in here, which will be owned by the airport, they won't have to lease that, even though they built it, that becomes public. And so just the ground under the, the hangers, that then is leased. And I think it's 42 cents per square foot? 42 cents per square feet, square foot per year for, for that land. And then that becomes revenue stream for the airport.
How long are those leases after it's been developed, the 42 cents?
It's a great question. That's a, that's a good question. Traditionally, it's been 30 years.
So meaning it would traditionally have been locked in at 42 cents for 30 years?
No, no, no.
No? Okay.
The lease is for 30, it was for 30 years. But, but the, the lease amount can grow with the budget as you have inflation and, and other things, so. That being said, these hangers are, are quite expensive. Some of these hangers, was it $7 million that I heard?
So the big one's three and a half million.
Three and a half million? The other project had one that was $7 million. These are expensive hangers. And in order to finance something that expensive, you have to have longer lease periods with the bank. And so we worked with the FAA and we were able to develop. And so we worked with the FAA and we were able to develop a 50-year lease for, for these buildings and that made the financing work for these projects. So yes, so for 50 years. And then it can renew after that as long as they maintain their hangers well. They, they follow our minimum standards for airport buildings and, and, and they keep up the appearance of the grounds and stuff, so.
So is there a contingency or anything? Because 50 years is a long time. Is there a contingency that if they don't maintain that, or what happens if after 40 years they start to run down or whatever? Is there anything the city can do to encourage them to clean them up or maintain them?
Typically, we, we've kind of waited for the leases to, to go out for that. These will be very nice buildings. So I'm not as concerned about that here, but we just went through this process on a few hangers that as their leases went out, we gave provisional one-year renewals until they could get to a point where they could rebuild them. Okay, so there's, there's a little bit of detail here that I wanted to share with you. So this, this particular phase one is actually divided up into sub-phases that will be built one at a time. One of the, the biggest challenges that this side of the airport has had and why it's never developed in the last 100 years is because infrastructure was such a challenge. You basically have doubled the amount of infrastructure costs that you would in a normal development because taxiway, taxi lane, ramp, those type of airport improvements are so much more expensive than a regular road. But on top of that, you have to build the roads to get vehicles in to, to the area and you have to build all the utilities you would in a normal development. So there's been a lot of challenges in getting this area done. And so we've had an RDA in place for quite some time that would pay for finishing out Main Street from 2015 North, which is the start of the airport, all the way to Dry Creek Parkway is what it eventually will be named, so. But we, we haven't wanted to spend that money until it would support improvement. And so we've kept that in the bank. It's been making great interest right now. And so we've just sat on that. This contract commits those funds. But it says that we will not do the work of doing these Main Street improvements until the building permit fees for one of the hangers on Main Street are paid. So that's the trigger. And so once there's, there's money committed to, to building a hangar on Main Street, that's when we'll, we'll expend our funds to do that. One of the big controversies on this site is, is how easily, I lost my pointer, but how easily it was to build the hangers on Main Street. And so tho- those Main Street hangers were heavily contested to have the right to build that. But we really needed the internal part of the airport to, to get their infrastructure, the taxiways, the, the utilities into there. And so you were a part of this discussion some time ago. It seems like it was a long time ago, but it was about a year and a half, two years ago. Yeah, anyway, in that process, in order to find a way to, to get that done, what we've agreed to is performance-based to, to provide some reimbursement of the cost to build this road. But that had to be performance-based. So what this contract does is it says, okay, once you, you finish one of these five phases, you will be reimbursed for 20% per phase for this road going in. They have to build the road up front and get it functional so that it can support all the development in this area. But with each phase, they'll get reimbursed 20% so that we can ensure that the development that, that will pay the city costs will, will happen before we expend those costs, if that makes sense. Any questions on any of that? Took a long time to work that out, so. All right, so the other thing was, is we have another developer here in this area. And if you could, I think it's Exhibit F or something. Down at the bottom, just keep scrolling down. Keep going. All right, right here. So this is the other development. So we had two kind of competing developments for the same area. The one on the north is larger because they had the huge infrastructure expense of that road, Dry Creek Parkway going in. The other development had a bite of Main Street as well. But one of the things that we had is we have, we have Taxiway Alpha right here and this was just rebuilt, okay? We just had a presentation on that. This will be Taxiway Bravo. And right now Taxiway Bravo is only constructed right to here. But both of these developments need Taxiway Bravo to extend to here so that access to the runway could be provided. In fact, they actually needed to extend it all the way out to the road so that we could have access from Main Street into the development. And so what we did is we called this kind of the common area, the, the area needed by both sides. But the way to ensure that that would get constructed so that neither development could be an obstacle in the development, in, in the other development, we've written into these two agreements that a cash bond for all of the shared type improvements needed to be submitted to the city within 90 days of the execution of these agreements. And then that cash bond can be used to reimburse whichever developers is first to the construction of those improvements. And then in the agreement says those, those improvements have to be constructed by September 15th of 2024. So that's another kind of unique thing in this agreement, but, but we, we've gone through it with, with both developers and they both feel good about that, that arrangement, so. Am I missing any high points?
You're not constructing Taxiway Bravo all the way out. It's just this, just a little piece that ties the two pieces together.
Yeah, yeah. So in fact, Taxiway Bravo won't be actually constructed by either of these developers. That's something that the FAA actually wants to construct because they have really high standards for, for this type of taxiway. It's very expensive to build a taxiway. Now Taxiway Bravo, Taxiway B1 is, is more of an airport standard, which is, is a bit more cost-effective. But we did just recently get some federal funding to, to, to do a good design on Taxiway Bravo all the way through there. And we have some, what, what we work out with the FAA every couple of years is kind of a 10-year capital improvement plan. And, and the extension of Taxiway Bravo down along this alignment is in that. It's going to be a lot of money. I'm sure we'll have to just do it in sections, but, but we're getting some pretty good federal support from, from Congressman Burgess and some others that really, I think.
Christian, did we get, did he help us kind of move ahead a few years with that first installment? Any idea how many years earlier we're getting that $200,000 then?
Yeah, so there's a certain amount of funds that we get what are called bill funds, by parter tradition, infrastructure law funds that are a set amount that's planned out for the next 10 years. And what Congressman Owens did is instead of moving those funds up, he actually passed in standalone bills, additional funding on top of what we are already going to receive.
That was just for our airport.
Actually for airports in Utah, but.
We don't care about that. That's, that's our congressman doing, doing that for us, which we're really, really proud of, happy for. And that started really, I think, with some efforts. We had him there and he was seeing the good things that we were doing at the airport and it was easy for him to get on board with, with what we're trying to do. So I mean, it's not a lot of money in the scheme of airports, but for us, what's the big deal is that it's ahead of schedule. So it's a good, it's a great start for us.
He, he came out and met with the mayor and these developers and really caught the vision of what this airport could become. And I think some good things are coming of it, so. Anyway, I, I can't explain both agreements. There's two different lease agreements, but they're both signed already by the developers. So if you approve those, they'll be executed tonight or tomorrow whenever the mayor signs them.
Restate that, the September 24th, what's the significance of, of that that you just mentioned?
Okay, so by September 15th of, of next year, the Taxiway B1, which is this taxiway here, has to be constructed, allowing for hangers on either side of it to build and the airplanes can leave the hangers and come, come to the runway.
I mean, that's pretty significant. We, we've been waiting a long time on this side of the runway for something to happen. And that, that, that surprises me a little bit, but residents should, I mean.
It's about 160 something years.
I couldn't remember, but.
Only Chad remembers.
That's a long time.
Yes.
You will see activity on, on the Main Street side of, of the airport and, and probably pretty visible. So that's neat. That's good.
I, I'm looking forward to the restaurant. We're looking the runway. I, I was able to eat at one such restaurant in, in Arizona once and it was really fun to just see the airplanes land and take off while you have a nice meal with some friends, so.
I, I think that was more of jealousy as we watched those people fly in, get their clubs out, get in their Lamborghini, go golfing, come back.
It's nice to see how the other side.
Hey, Chris, while we've got you and while you're talking about restaurants and things at the airport and while we've got Christian here, there was a recent news article by, I think it was ABC Utah, Ford Utah, whatever, talking about a possible museum at the Spanish Fork Airport. Is there truth behind that?
Yeah, so museums are, are not cheap and they take a long time. We've been working on a museum for Halverson, for the Candy Bomber for quite some time. They've been building up funds and, and it just, it takes a while for that to, to come to fruition. But we're very supportive of it. We've written a letter of support for them and, and we'll work with them when, when they have the funding and whatever we can do to help them, we'll do. But that's two museums looking at our airport, so that's.
That's pretty cool.
It could be a great, great asset, even more of a great asset to the city than it already is.
Well, before opening it up for, I guess, a motion or any more questions, I'll just say publicly to the, the groups, the private entities undertaking this, thank you. Thank you for, for looking at, at Spanish Fork. Thank you for going through the, the changes, the iterations. I know the, the San Miguel extension that we've talked about before and, and switching that around is a big deal for the airport too. But this is not a small investment in our city limits. You know, guestimates would put this north, when you combine both of these, at least north of $200 million coming into, to Spanish Fork around the airport. So that's a big deal and we're grateful for you sticking with it and, and excited for the partnership. So thank you. And Shane now is going to kill that excitement with some other question.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, no more questions. I just wanted to say thank you for both of these guys to. I mean, when this first was presented to us, where, where's the board? Where's the airport board on? Did they weigh in? Did they vote? Jess, did you, you guys vote on it?
On this piece, long before I came on, I think it was when you were on the airport board still.
The first time it came to them, they were, no way in the world, put it that way. But you did a lot of work to go from that original to this. Yeah, I didn't, this is not your traditional city engineer type of a lift. And so congratulations to both of you. This is going to be, like you said, Mayor, a huge investment into our community to go from bare ground that's basically bringing in zero dollars to, you know, $200,000 a year plus hangar fees, which is going to be eclipse that pretty easily. That's a very good thing for our airport. We're going to, we're going to have, what do you call those things, Jesse? Were they touchdown? Were.
Touch and go?
You know, the, how many, you need 10,000?
Operations.
Operations. We're going to probably double, triple that in the next little bit because of this. Then FAA money comes even further or faster. And so this is, this is significant. So great job. A lot of work. I've been on the council now two and a half years and I think this was the first thing we talked about when I got on the council. So congratulations. A lot of work.
I, just adding to what Shane's saying, one of the things that I've seen Christian do in this last year that I've been on the airport board is he's taken the, the, I guess, the PAC or being told, hey, we need to figure out ways to not subsidize the airports very seriously. And he's been working on ways to do that and not only this, but in other ways. So thank you, Christian, for what you're doing to, you know, really use the, or not use the tax dollars of the city to make sure that the airport is self-sufficient. He, he works tirelessly to try and make that happen. So thank you.
I think you were here when I mentioned it because, you know, the politician side of me, Springville, somebody in Springville said how great the mayor was, but I neglected to mention they said how great Christian was too because there was a few people there that flew into Spanish Fork and then they came to that event and they said, hey, you've got a good one in Christian. So I'll pass that along publicly to you, but, but good work. This is some intricate stuff and, and you've been involved in it from the beginning. So appreciate you. Okay, any other, if there's no other discussion on item F, need to do these separate. I guess the, they're kind of presented to you both there, but F and G, both of these hangar lease agreements. We'll take them one by one. I'd entertain a motion for F.
Move to approve the Peady Aviation Main Street Development Lease Ground Lease Agreement.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Carden, a roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Okay, item F is approved, takes us to G. Same kind of thing here.
I move to approve the Utah Aviation Lease Agreement.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Argyle, a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Item G is approved as well. Thank you. Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Great job.
Okay. Mr. Mertz, anything before you go? You know, you, I mean, you're here the whole time. We'd love you to say something too.
I'm not one that, like a politician, not, you know, afraid of a microphone.
We'll teach you, yeah.
I'm the project manager on this and one thing I just wanted to say, totally echo what you were just saying about Christian and Chris. They've been great to work with, absolutely just tremendous to work with. It's funny because earlier today I was talking to a guy in a neighboring community who I had to go back 18 different times to get something approved in that city. And, and Chris and Christian have just been efficient and fantastic to work with. But one thing I do want to say on that development, it has, it's called Peady Aviation Business Park. And I don't know if you're familiar with Mike Peady, but he's a resident here in Spanish Fork. His name is on that. And so this, this will be first class. So we're excited to have the restaurant and, and be able to set things up where it's educational. So school kids in Spanish Fork that want to learn about aviation will, will get a taste for what it's about. And, and it'll be something that you'll be very much proud of. We're, we're sure of that. It does cost a lot of money. And we kind of like look at each other and think, what are we thinking? But we, we're excited to make it happen. So thank you so much for all your support and we're just excited to do it.
Thank you.
We think we, our goal is to have it done in about a year. That's, that's what we're shooting for. So we'll see what happens. You never know with construction, but that's the goal. But we're excited. Thanks so much.
You guys got the passion and, and we appreciate your partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor.
Yes.
We have election results in.
Oh, okay. You want to put those up? You want to post them? You want to put those up, you want to post them? First round here, is this your first drop?
These are just preliminary, the first preliminary drop.
And what are they, you, they said, or did they say how many drops they're going to have tonight from Utah County?
Yes, they're supposed to have one now and then also at 10 o'clock.
So you should see two tonight?
You should see two tonight.
And then they'll trickle in days after that as well?
Yes, every time they count, they have to give us a count as well.
Okay. Somebody will put those up and then we'll get to our auditor that made it here, if that's all right? Are you okay with that?
Always did this choice vote, I don't understand that much.
Not in order. So this is the way the names were on the ballot?
Yes, this is the master ballot order. That's why. So that doesn't necessarily mean the top are the, are leading.
Doing a choice vote.
So right now it looks as though Stacy Beck has 22.36%. And you can see how many votes that she has right there, 3,211. And then the second one would be 19.13 from Landon Took. And third, we have, it looks like Matt Barber, 16.33%, 2,244. Oh, sorry, Jesse, sorry, Jesse. Jesse is in third place with 17.47% and then Matt Barber. And then we have, it looks like Jackie, is Jackie next? Nope, Mike Clayson, Mike Clayson is next. And then Jackie Larson. So these are just preliminary, these aren't the final. Though, because we're mail-in ballots, those will continue to come in. And so every time they count, like we said, they will continue to give us numbers. The final canvas that you guys will approve will be December 5th.
Tara, can you tell people where to go look for those numbers too?
Absolutely. So you can go to our website. There's a little button that says results at the very top of our election page. You can also go to the Utah County site, they will have them there as well. And then this right here is the state site that you can go and check them out on.
And the county will post there shortly and then we have links from our website to the county pages as well. This is live, this isn't what they sent you, this is live on their website?
Yes, this is live.
Well, and this is in the county's website, this is the state, maybe you mentioned that.
Because I'm looking on the counties and it's, they're not up yet.
Yes.
I'd expect it there about a half hour, probably around eight thirty.
Yes.
It just hit, the county one just hit, so it's.
They said they would hit both at the same time. That didn't happen, so I don't know if one server is not as fast as the other.
It's one county commissioner that we're going to blame. We'll get right after them.
I wonder who that is.
Yeah, we'll get right after them. So if citizens want to find out, they, there will be links from our website if they just go to SpanishFork.org. They can get links.
There's a red button that says election results. You just click on that and it will take you to all the results. And then as those numbers come in, we also will be given how many ballots are out to count and how many ballots they need to check on, like for signatures or there was damage to a ballot or something like that. And then there will be an audit that we get to be a part of as a, or I get to be a part of as a city recorder, where we go audit the counts and make sure that they match. And then they will do a final canvas to me and then I'll bring it to you.
Perfect.
Any more questions?
Any questions for Tara? Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Tara. We'll watch for another update later tonight. And now we'll go back, before we go to our discussion item of the public meeting schedule for 2024, we'll go back up to B, Fiscal Year 2023 Independent Financial Audit Report. We have Mr. Hatterley here with us. Jordan, are you going to introduce our guest there?
He acted like he wanted me to introduce him. So this is John Hatterley, he's with Larson Company, they're our external auditors. So he'll come and share his audit results.
Travis, could we cue the walk-up music? Go ahead.
We've been playing it since you left Nephi, but we'll just keep looping it, that's all right. Did you see Mayor Sealy down there? Were you down there for a city business?
I did, yeah. Same thing, I was doing their presentation, so.
All right.
Thanks for letting me screw up your meeting tonight. Jordan, are you going to put the, are you going to put the audit report out? Okay, I'll be quick because I know you guys have a long meeting. I'll just go through our reports, what we're required to report on and what our opinions are. And then just a little bit of communication that I'm required to communicate to you as a council. The first report is our audit report and it always precludes the audit in any financial statements you look at that have been audited. Our opinion on the financial statements is outlined first and is an unmodified or an unqualified opinion. That's a clean opinion. I don't know why we as auditors have to unqualify something if it's good, but whatever, we're dorks. The next section is just the basis for our opinions, so the standards that we are required to follow. So generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. Your responsibility for the financial statements is the financial statements themselves as well as all the record-keeping and the documentation. And in that second paragraph, you scroll down just a little bit. This kind of came about with COVID. This is our new, I call it AC after COVID. Everything goes back to COVID, right? During COVID, a lot of the governments and a lot of the businesses didn't survive that period of time. And so as a result of that, they all had audited financial statements. And external users of the financial statements will use, they use your financial statements to rate your bonds, to lend you money, your investments, interest, things like that. They're all reliant on your audited financial statements. And so they relied on that information and then within 12 months, a lot of those businesses dissolved. They didn't make it through that time period. And they didn't discuss the negative effects COVID was having in their, in their entities, in their financial statements. So as a result of that, now our standards changed and your requirements changed that you are required to during the year, if there are conditions or events that arise that would preclude you from continuing as a going concern, at least for the next 12 months, you have to identify those items and then do an internal analysis to figure out, okay, how are we going to overcome this shortfall? Is it possible or are we looking at insolvency? Luckily, in the state of Utah, most of the governments actually kind of thrived during COVID. But outside the state of Utah, they didn't fare as well. Our responsibilities, if you look at the beginning of page two in the audit report or the bullets there, we have to exercise professional judgment, we have to understand your internal controls. We look at the accounting principles that you're using, make sure that you're doing things the right way. And then that last bullet point, we also have to look for conditions or events while we're doing our test work that arise or that we identify that would prohibit you from continuing as a going concern. Required supplementary information, just remember that there's, there are sections of the financial statements, the M D N A, which always follows the audit report and is kind of the introduction to your financial statements. And then there's a section after the notes called required supplementary information. Those sections are not part of the basic financial statements, so they don't fall under our opinion. We do tile the numbers back and make sure that all the numbers are accurate. And if you wanted to get a Reader's Digest version of what the financial, what's contained in the financial statements, the Management's Discussion Analysis is a good place to read. That kind of lets you know the information. That's where the comparative information is to the prior year, so you can see how the city did over the prior year and some dialogue rather than just raw numbers. Supplementary information, so the city's elected to include in the financial statements the combining statements of your non-major funds. All of that detail is at the end of the financial statements as well as the federal single audit. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. That's considered supplementary information and the opinion on the supplementary information always rides with our opinion on the financial statements. You guys going to sleep yet? All right, the next report's on page 81. This is a report that we're required to issue just stating that we've done our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, part of those standards state that we have to look at your internal controls. We don't test your internal controls, nor do we give an opinion on your internal controls. But what we are looking for is A, that you have controls in place and B, that they're functioning. And then we make sure that there are not misstatements in the financial statements being caused by any deficiencies in those internal controls. There wasn't any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, so we'll move on. The next report we're required to issue is for the state auditor. We actually give an opinion on your compliance with the state requirements laid out by the state auditor's office. For Spanish Fork this year, we were required to look at your budgetary compliance, restricted taxes, government fees, fund balance, and your fraud risk assessment. I don't love the fraud risk assessment, but you still have to do it. So our opinion on your compliance is also an unmodified or an unqualified opinion. So also a clean opinion. I have to put the caveat in there that this is not a legal opinion. I'll leave it up to your attorney to give you legal advice. We don't get into that realm. And it's also not a broad opinion on the entirety of state code. It's very specific to these areas. There is a little bit of confusion when we say, hey, you know, you're, it's an unqualified opinion that you're in compliance. We do incorporate a lot of state code that we're not required to test as part of state compliance. Things that I feel are more relevant to what we're doing as auditors. For example, we make sure that any money that comes into the city goes through the proper channels and makes its way to the bank and within the required timeframe of three days. So that to me is, as an auditor, is more important than maybe looking at some of the other things that we're required to look at. All right, the next report is a report we're required to issue for the federal government and this will get submitted to the federal government. And this is our opinion on your major federal programs. The major federal programs this year was your ARBA money, both what you received directly and then indirectly from the state and the county. We make sure that you're in compliance with the requirements of that grant. Our opinion is an unmodified or an unqualified opinion there as well. And then findings, there weren't any reportable findings either in state compliance or in the financial statement audit itself or in the federal audit that we performed. So get that out of the way. All right, just a couple of things that I'm required to go over with you. I won't spend a lot of time on this letter, you guys can read through it. Our responsibility in relationship to the audit, it's all laid out in the engagement letter. That's why we have you sign an engagement letter. It discusses what the scope of the audit is, what we'll be looking at, what your responsibility is, what the timing of the audit is. Compliance with ethical requirements regarding independence. That's my job as the partner to make sure that not only is my team independent, but also our entire firm has to be independent of the city in order for us to perform the audit. And that kind of alleviates Jordan and his staff to make sure that we're independent because that responsibility lies with me. And we get audited just like we audit the city. We have our own external CPAs that come in and audit our audits to make sure that we're documenting things correctly and that we're also independent. Significant risks, we've got a lot of pushback on this and this kind of came out a couple of years ago with one of our new standards that we're now required to communicate to you as a governing body, what the significant risks were in our audit. And those were improper revenue recognition, cash disbursements, and potential management bias estimates and the ability of management to override controls. So the pushback that we get is that somehow we're accusing you or that you have issues in the city that are causing these significant events. And so we try to reword the language so that it's better understandable. And really what it means is all of our audits are performed on a risk basis. So every line item in the financial statements gets assigned a risk before we even come out to do field work. So if we're talking about cash and capital assets, typically capital assets have a lower risk because A, it's easy to figure out what the historical cost and make sure that you're reporting them correctly. And B, it's pretty hard to pick up this building and move it. So it's not like you can misappropriate a large capital asset. So the risk over capital assets is a little bit lower. Cash is easy to manipulate and it's easy to misappropriate. So we do additional testing over cash to make sure that the balances that you're reporting and the processes that you have over cash are more accurate so that we can come to the same risk level and assurance level in order to give our opinion. And then we have overall risk. So these are risks that are based on the nature of the industry, the complexity of the entity, you know, smaller entities versus a larger entity. There are different risks, but the majority, if not all, of our government audit clients as well as our private clients have these risks. Improper revenue recognition is a standard significant risk, no matter what type of entity you are. And this, this came about because of Enron and Arthur Andersen, if you guys remember that. What Enron was doing was they were inflating their revenues inappropriately to increase shareholder wealth. So as a cause of that, then our standards change that says, now we have to recognize improper revenue recognition. So we have to do additional testing over your revenue to make sure that you are properly recording revenue in the right period and for the right amount. Cash disbursements, you're a public entity. People are concerned with how you're spending money. You get grants that have restrictions on how you can spend money and so that's a significant risk. And then the last one, management bias estimates and the ability to override controls. Those are really inherent weaknesses in controls that you have no control over. So Jordan has the ability to create a journal entry. All of your financial statement system should be built on transactions. So as you assess a utility bill, you're going to send out a bill. And in the system, that's going to create a revenue and it's going to create a receivable. And when that citizen comes in to pay that bill, then you're going to record a cash and you're going to reduce receivables. So that's how your financial statement is built. If there's an error or if you need to make a change, those are not transactions. So Jordan has the ability to create a journal entry, which is bypassing the transaction control. And so he just overrode a control. The inherent weakness is that those journal entries can be used inappropriately to change the financial statements or to do things inappropriate inside the financial statement system. So additional testing that we do is we look at every journal entry that's created in the system throughout the year, make sure that there's proper documentation, it's approved, that every, that it's, the balances that it's changing are appropriate for what that journal entry is doing. So really the significant risks are, it's more for us and how much testing that we have to do over significant areas. And we are looking for misstatements being caused by any of these risks.
All right, go ahead.
Come over here.
I didn't know who said it, I'm looking down.
Those three risks are interchangeable through any city you would be looking at, right? It's not like they were, Spanish Fork here are your top three risks necessarily.
Yeah.
And the statement below that says you didn't find anything as you analyzed those.
Correct, yeah. Yep. Accounting estimates, there's estimates in the financial statements and over time, those estimates can change. We just make sure that those estimates are reasonable and they're consistent, really as a way for you guys to have good historical data so that you can have good decision-making procedures for the future. You don't want to have estimates in the financial statements that swing up and down because as you're looking back five years, trying to plan for the next five years and you have all these financials ups and downs, you don't know what the future's going to hold because, and it may be caused by estimates. So we make sure any estimates in the financial statements are reasonable and that they're not changing a lot. One of the more significant ones that you don't have control over is the Utah retirement systems. That's something that gets built into your financial statements. Last year, you had a net pension asset, which in all intents and purposes means that your pension is fully funded with the state. So it was a liability and then last year it was a net asset. So we had to record a revenue, so your income statement increased and recorded an asset. And then this year it flip-flopped and went back to a liability. So it's something that really is outside of your control. So my advice is when you're looking at the financial records, then I would ignore anything that has to do with the U R S as far as balances that are appropriate to plan and budget for. Let's see, management representations, we get a representation letter signed by the city that they've been honest and forthcoming with any information that pertains to the financial statement audit. One of the biggest ones is that there's litigation or liabilities that the city doesn't want to talk about. And so they don't tell, say anything to us as auditors. And then we give an opinion on the financial statements and then it comes out later that, hey, there's this huge liability that the city's now liable for and it wasn't disclosed, then it makes our opinion invalid. So really. So really, it's just a letter, just like we get an engagement letter signed. You know, with our terms, it's an open and honest letter that we get from the city. And I think that's it. Just really appreciate working with the city. You have great staff. Thanks for being nice to my staff. I wasn't onsite only a couple of days this year, but they had great reports. They got the information as quick as they were asking for it. So I really appreciate that as the partner and trying to make sure things are getting done. I get a little bit antsy when they're asking for information and it's not being provided to them. The auto hairs on my neck kind of stand up a little bit because I don't know if you're trying to recreate the information or you don't have the information or you're trying to change the information. So I really appreciate how Jordan and his staff just gave all the information readily available to our staff and it made the audit go really smooth. So any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hatterly here? So Jordan is keeping up the tradition of Kent Clark that did this for a few decades.
I don't know that he's quite mad super yet, but he's getting there.
He's working on it.
We need to come up with a good nickname for him, though.
Yeah, we've got to find something.
Yeah, I'll find out. I'll come up with one.
John, we appreciate you. Thanks for doing the good work and working well with the staff as well. This is an important piece, I think, that sometime gets overlooked in the annual discussions up here. But this is your independent financial audit report that shows the city and the government that's watching after your money and deciding what to do with taxpayer funds. Is trying to do it in an honest and transparent and legal way, obviously. So appreciate that. If there's no questions for staff or for John, I'd entertain a motion on item B, which would be to approve the fiscal year 2023 independent financial audit report. Oh, accept it, then approve it?
We do approve it. Accept.
Just accept it.
I'm just reading, I'm reading and...
You're not reading well. I got, it does say approve. You're reading right.
See? It says approve, does not say accept. We're going to go with accept.
Like I knew what he said. He did.
I got you, Mayor. I move to accept the fiscal year 2023 independent fiscal, or financial audit report.
Second, thank you, Councilman Carden. Motion by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote here. Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
And Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Okay, that is accepted, the 2023.
Just a little commentary on that. Have had the opportunity to go through a bunch of those in my government life. Never fun, but always rewarding at the end when you get these type of results. Great job, great job from the auditor. It's something you can hold up and say to the taxpayer, we're doing it right. We're taking care of your money and you can trust us when you send your checks to us. So thank you very much, Jordan. Thank you for your team and thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. Good, okay, takes us to item A, a discussion item tonight. Our only discussion item of the 2024 public meeting schedule calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tara's been working on the schedule for our meetings next year and we're following what we've prescribed in our code and meeting every first and third Tuesday of the month. So it really isn't that big of a deal in terms of this is the schedule. But we have a question for you next year in the calendar year of 2024. With the way the Fiesta Day's schedule is outlined and the way the calendar falls, it may not be necessary to only hold one meeting in July. And July has five Tuesdays. So if we do hold one meeting in July on the 9th of July, then we'd be four weeks between that meeting and the meeting in August. So as you look at this right now, I think it's showing, July shows two council meetings on the 2nd and the 16th or the typical first and third Tuesday. On the 16th of the month in July, there are two Fiesta Days events that are programmed. One is the baby contest, that is a daytime event. And the second is a pie eating contest, sorry, pie baking contest. Some people get to eat them, some people get to eat them. And that is also an afternoon event. And so there isn't a conflict with the calendar if you would like to hold it, if you'd like to hold a council meeting on the 16th. Years ago, we'd often be conflicting with like the flag ceremony or some evening event like that. So these are your meetings. On this graph up on the screen, you're looking for those dark blue events, in particular for council meetings.
Do you mean red?
I do mean red, the bluer holidays. That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for the holidays. You're looking at the red. It didn't line up for February right away. I'm like, wait, it's already wrong. How is this wrong? We've looked at this a million times. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck.
I personally will, I know I'll be out of town July 2nd. But I do, any of you know that if you'll be gone that week?
Yeah, I think it's worth noting, that's the 4th of July week.
I'm a planner.
Yeah, it's the 4th of July week.
I mean, typically I miss about a third of these anyway. So I'm not sure I get to weigh in.
Well, which third are you missing this year?
I'll figure that out as we go.
You get to decide.
We could bid right now. We can do it like the police and fire department. We can do some bids right now and then...
Some horse trading on the dates.
What do you want to do, Chad? He moves to approve.
He's like every holiday.
I think on July and October and January, you should have three meetings.
Rude.
Is that like the definition of lame duck? Or just lame?
Something like that.
In addition to the red, I'll draw your attention to, let's see, it's kind of an orange, goldenrod color in May on the 14th. And then again in October on the 8th. Those are pre-designated combined work sessions with the planning commission. We've had, I think, a year and a half of these where we're setting them. Right now, this is when we're going to do them.
Nick, can you show the slide before this?
Well, just scroll up, you mean?
No, I meant his document, so I can switch it.
So those are pre-set on those dates. Any feedback? I think roughly this is when we did it, right? This year in May and then October. So we're staying in the same months and in the same slot, which lands on the 2nd. What is this? Well, I know that, but what is it?
So all the red is council. And then the blue is those, is that where we're trying to decide if we just have it on the 9th? And then the purple are the two, planning commission and council. So Chad, you're going to get your wish because in October, we're going to have three meetings. And in May, we're going to have three meetings.
I like that.
And then we just need to know if in December you also, he'll probably get to this, if you want just one meeting as well.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So December, next year, yeah, in that first week in December, the mayor. And I will not be here on the 3rd. And so right now, this shows that we would meet on the 2nd Tuesday in December. One meeting only. But the way the calendar falls, that will make December, there will be four weeks between the December council meeting and the January council meeting. That's probably okay in the world of things. I think the world does stop in December, whereas it doesn't necessarily stop in July. I say that like I'm trying to tell you what to do. You, this is your calendar, so you do whatever you want.
Well, it's not much different than what we've been doing, right?
Correct. We've tried to match it. The only exception from this year in '23 to '24 is right now, this is showing two meetings in July. You say right now, we'll adjust that. And then our plan is to bring this in document form for you to approve at the next council meeting.
I'm fine with the two in July personally. Stacy, you may differ because you're very busy with Fiesta Days committee and everything else.
Oh, I'm fine with it.
The 16th is...
She's going to miss the one.
I'm going to miss the one, so I'm totally fine. I'll still only have one.
Stacy's answer is, I am only having one.
So whatever you, the rest of you like to do.
Wherever you're going to be, you're going to bring your hat, put it on.
Note also that right now, it's already programmed in here, the work session, the mid-year budget work session, January 25, 26, and 27. It's typically historically been two days. We're going to shift that and try to capture a little bit of a Thursday, Friday, and then be done earlier on Saturday. A little more, a little more time together, a little less long hours together. Slide adjustments.
You said your only conflict on the 16th of July is the baby contest.
Yep, baby contest and the pie baking contest. Both are held at this, yeah, both are held at the senior center. Both are daytime events.
I think we should just move them to here during council meetings.
We could certainly move the pie baking.
Eating.
And have the tasting competition here. Although I think that's a terrible gig. I'm sure the pies are great, but you have to choose and then people hate you. Why don't you let them judge? Let them judge and then bring the goods out here afterwards. Like, what did you say, sir?
I just said they hate us anyway.
Okay, any other questions?
Send us this link, right?
Yeah.
Good.
Stacy will mirror that over her vacation calendar.
They're always on the calendar. It's conflicted.
You've got to merge that calendar with that calendar. We're going to send this calendar to Carrie.
She will, never mind.
Okay, that one's just information there. So take that attachment with you and schedule out your next year. Chad, you too, so you can be watching.
So I know when you guys are meeting.
Yep, you can know and you can comment publicly. We have no closed session tonight, so we are going to...
I move to adjourn.
Second, Councilman Marshall, or excuse me, Councilman Carden makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilman Euler. A roll call vote, Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yep.
Councilman Marshall?
Yep.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
And Councilman Euler?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming and thanks for joining us on TV.
I don't know if I should have been offended or you, Shane?
You.